I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fathers, we gather together as Fannie County Commission, we ask your blessing on the decisions we make today in benefit of the county and their taxpayers. We also ask that you be with everyone in the room, guide us, help us in our daily lives, protect us. But most of all, Lord, we ask for moisture for the region. We always need some more, and so we appreciate your guidance in that way as well. In Jesus' name, amen.
Morning, everyone. The first thing on the agenda is the consent agenda, approval of the minutes. I have a slight error that I made and would like to amend the minutes to reflect that our business meeting, or excuse me, planning meeting with county heads and other electeds will be on April 3rd and not on April 6th. Is there a motion of that effect?
I'll move we can prove the consent agenda with the adjustments to the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with the amendment to the amendments, minutes. Is there any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now is our public comment, part of our agenda. If anyone from the public is here to address the commission, to give you an opportunity to do so, your limits will, remarks will be limited to five minutes. And please keep those minutes and comments directed to us and not anybody else in the room. Seeing no one taking advantage of public comment before the commission, we'll move into the business items. Resolution oh nine twenty twenty-three for rezoning. John?
Morning.
Good morning. Please state your name, please.
John Persisto, I'm one of the planners with NDS. The applicant VNA Lugo is requesting to rezone the property generally located at forty-four twenty, forty-four thirty, and forty-four forty, South Old Highway eighty-three, from A Agricultural District to RR Rural Residential District. This area has recently been platted and contains a total of twelve point five four acres. Lot one contains four point one five acres, lot two contains three point four four acres, and lot three contains four point nine five acres. The property is currently vacant and the applicant intends to have a house built on each lot. The proposed use of residential is not consistent with a comprehensive plan or future land use. As it shows, this area has agricultural potential. RR Rural Residential District is the most appropriate zoning district for a single-family dwelling within the county and provides a small variety of uses. The governing body may make its recommendation with the criteria down below. It was approved through the planning commission on February sixteenth, and there are three alternatives. The governing body may adopt the planning commission's recommendation by approving the proposed resolution. The governing body may override the planning commission's recommendation by a two-third majority vote, or the governing body may return the recommendation to the planning commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove, and staff recommends alternative one.
Questions from commissioners? What's your comments on this, sir?
No comments.
No comments.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd offer a motion.
And what is that motion, sir?
Motion to approve the rezoning.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the rezoning as submitted with the criteria in section twenty-seven point oh four, is that in your motion?
There it is.
And your second, sir?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, very good. Is there any further discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, we have another. Did you have anything else?
No.
Very good, thank you. Trent? Are you here for Mr. Maxwell?
I'll go for Trent, yeah.
All right, fire away.
Palmer Land Surveying Services on behalf of Calvesta Implement Company is requesting to plat the Calvesta Implement Company subdivision. The property is generally located at thirty-two seven three zero East Highway one fifty-six. Lot one contains nine point seven acres and is currently zoned RI, and lot two contains point five eight, point five eight eight acres and currently zoned A Agricultural District. The plat was reviewed on December fifteenth of twenty twenty-two and met the requirements. The planning commission recommended approval of the plat on February sixteenth. There are two alternatives, the governing body may approve the parcel plat, or the governing body may not approve the parcel plat. And staff recommends alternative one, approve the parcel plat.
Any other comments? Comments from the board?
Question, the lot two, is that part of this too?
Yeah, there is an ingress, egress easement on the west side of the property.
Just from the aerial photo, I thought there was a house there or something.
I think there is.
Is there?
Yeah, it's some building, yep.
All right. Any other comments from the commission? Motion, it's in your district, Dwayne.
I move we approve plat twenty twenty-two dash sixty-one, if you're listening.
And I would second that motion.
Been moved and seconded to approve the parcel plat for Calvesta Implement Company subdivision as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Don Boyd, Public Works. The Board of County Commissioners is asked to waive the two dollar per ton municipal waste. Is that better?
You're real soft spoken, so.
We received a letter from the City of Garn City requesting Fannie County assistance in the spring cleanup by waiving the two dollar per ton fee. Fannie County receives two dollars per ton municipal waste from the landfill. Waste Connection sends us money to the county on a quarterly basis. This fee has been waived in the past for spring and fall cleanups. We will also request that the landfill waive this fee for county residents to haul unwanted items on the two Fridays during the cleanup. Those dates will be April seventh and April fourteenth. In the past, we've had three sites where county residents could dump their municipal waste, and the county provides the service of loading and hauling to the landfill. I've attached these two maps for your information. Alternatives are the board may approve the waiver, and two, the board may reject the waiver. Staff recommends alternative one.
Any other comments?
No.
Questions from the commission?
We've done this numerous times in the past, correct, Don?
Yes, sir.
I move that we waive the tipping fee on the seventh and the fourteenth.
I would second that motion.
Been moved and seconded to waive the fee for the spring cleanup as requested. Are there any further comments or questions or discussions from the commission? Yes, sir.
Generally accompanying this request, every year we then have a discussion about where to put the dumpsters in the county. So that you're aware, Mr. Chairman, that I don't know if we're going to do that again or not, but.
In the past, we usually do not provide dumpsters. There's just the three sites where they dump on the ground and we use a loader and haul it off in trucks.
And this year's sites are the Acosta Trailer Park and Hillcrest in Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Those are the sites from last year as well.
Yes, yes.
Have any problems with those last year that causes concern about using them again?
The only problem that I know of is the tires. We have a sign out saying no dumping of tires, we send out notices, but we still receive tires at those dump sites.
But it's manageable.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Do we publish a notice?
Yes, we publish it one time in the paper, and these notices are sent out to, we send it out to Acosta Trailer Park, we send it out in our sewer billing, and we also give it to Mr. Whitehurst to distribute in his park.
This prohibited items part that's in our packet, is it part of the notice?
Yes.
Perhaps no truck tires needs to be in all, or car tires needs to be in all caps.
Twenty-four point print.
We actually post signs at the sites, and it doesn't seem to deter it, so.
Do what you can.
Just deter it as much as you can.
Don, is the city's same timeframe, April fourth?
Yes, yes. They are doing it from, they actually do it for the full two weeks, April third through the fourteenth.
All right, it has been moved and seconded that we approve the waive the fee for the spring cleanup. Go ahead and call a question for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Curtis, or do we? Larry?
Good morning.
Please state your name, sir.
Larry Brungart with Fannie County Public Works. This morning, I'm asking the board to consider and approve our twenty twenty-three crack sealing project. On February second, we advertised bids for sixty-seven thousand five hundred pounds of crack seal to be, to be put down. On February seventeenth, we received one bid from B and H Paving of Scott City, Kansas. His bid was one dollar and fifty-eight cents a pound for a total of one hundred and six thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. The other two contractors, we did not get a bid from. Last three years, B and H has done this project for us, we've had good results with them. Last couple of years was ninety thousand pounds, this is a little bit less. We do go out and run the roads and see what we need, and with the, with the big projects we've had the last three years, two hundred thousand pounds one year, ninety thousand pounds two other years, we're in a lot better shape this year. So our alternatives are for the board to accept the bid from B and H Paving, or to not accept the bid from B and H Paving. Staff recommends to accept the bid from B and H for the sixty-seven thousand five hundred. Like I said, it's a dollar fifty-eight a pound, last year's bid was a dollar forty-five a pound.
We're going to get any crack sealing done in Sagebrush and Southwind?
Southwind I have as one of my roads, it's kind of an approximate, you know, how much this can cover. Southwind is one of the roads that I'm going to cover at the end. We did crack seal it last year. I did notice that it's starting to kind of come back a little bit. It's still sealed, but you're getting a little bit of a bump out there. So, yeah, we'll go back out there and we'll, we'll fill it. Sagebrush.
Restless and they're complaining to their.
Right, Sagebrush states we crack filled last year, but I, like I said, we'll, we drive the roads and check them. It does reflect, especially in the sand, so, yeah, when I try to manage that and try to get back out there.
There was a question whether, you know, we're doing this at the right time of the year, I think Curtis brought that up about.
Yeah, you want it to be.
More do it more during the cold.
Cold weather, and that's when the, that's when the cracks will widen out, and that's when we check them, and that's why we're, we're trying to get it out earlier this year. Last year, we had it out late in the year, same time we were doing painting, you know, other projects, so we're hoping to get this one done first this year.
Okay, so B and H has no problem doing it earlier?
No, I have talked to them and, you know, and they said that they would be flexible on, you know, getting us in early this year. Not, I told them I did not want to wait to the end of the, after summer.
Mr. Chairman, Larry, that what I'm seeing here on our memo is that this is out of the road and bridge budget.
Right.
It's a budgeted, it's an item that's been budgeted.
Right, yes.
For this amount, I mean, we're not exceeding this line item.
No, no.
Any other questions from commissioners? Entertained a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the bid from B and H Paving for a hundred and six thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the crack seal project.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the contract in the specifications noted in the motion. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, you have my question?
Yes, we've got time.
This has to do with Farmland Road. What in the world is going on out there that, where they ran concrete and then they're running a saw along and cutting out a four-inch wide trench? Anybody know what they're looking for? There's the other day, there was a guy down on his hands and knees with a, looked like a tablespoon, trying to clean out that trench.
Kurt Logsdin, Public Works. Dave, that was part of the final walkthrough that we did that I reported on, I think a couple of weeks ago. There were some areas that the city and the county made the contractor come back and make some repairs. And so that's what he's doing out there, is he's out there now making repairs. He's actually replaced a couple of large portions also.
To just be a brand-new road, then you drive by and we got it all dug up, it's, I was just curious, all right, thanks.
Yeah, and then we will still have a warranty on it.
Curtis, and so that also at the highway where they did a, took out a big piece?
Yes.
That's part of that?
Yes, yes. There were several places that we made them redo.
Thank you.
Hi, Mackenzie. Please state your name.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. So this morning, the board is asked to approve and sign the rezoning application for twenty-five oh five North Eighth Street. So this property and then the property directly to the north, Jesse, can you go to the map? Thank you. So this property and the one directly to the north were purchased by the board in twenty twenty-one. This is the future proposed site for a new health department EMS station combination. The current zoning for this property is R three multiple-family residential district. That is not the proper zoning for this type of a use, and so we're having to go through the process of rezoning it to C two general commercial. We're also going through the process of replating that whole area that this property that's highlighted actually has a platted right-of-way and easement, so we'll go through the process of replating that. So the alternatives before you today are the board may approve and sign the rezone application, or the board may not approve and sign the rezone application, and staff recommends alternative one. There is an application fee of two hundred and fifty dollars that will be paid out of the health department EMS budgets.
Questions from the board?
What is the north property already correctly zoned, or?
Yes, the north property is already zoned C two.
I do have a question. Is it going to make sense someday to not only rezone this, but to replat it and make this all one?
That's what we're doing right now. We're going to be replating both properties together, so it's one site.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the rezone application and signatures by the commissioners.
And pay the fee.
And, and payment of the fee, yes.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the rezone application, pay the fee. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Mackenzie, a question quick. Since we have a lot of development outside of the county, is neighborhood development involving you in anything outside the city limits right off the start?
I think to begin with, we had just a little bit of miscommunication because this is a new position here at the county, and so NDS has handled every single thing beforehand, and so now they have me as a resource to use, and so we've been working better together, but there has been a little bit of miscommunication in the past, so.
Getting better.
It's getting better.
All right, we'll take care of some paperwork. Next item on our agenda is the discussion of the upcoming meetings, goals and priorities of the commission. This is on our agenda at my request. I think it's vitally important for us as a commission and to our citizenry that we have in mind the goals in budgeting for twenty twenty-four, and we need to discuss and set those goals and have a methodology to accomplish that. What I propose is that we have a March twentieth work session after our regular meeting on March twentieth to set those goals and priorities, and I'd like each commissioner to have a set of five or less broad generally stated goals for us to achieve in twenty twenty-four budgeting. We are set to work with our department heads and elected officials on April third in a work session after our regular meeting to hear from them with regard to our needs and the priorities that we need to establish. And then we start the budgeting process by having agency hearings on May eighteenth and nineteenth beginning at eight thirty, and each day, Robert helped me out here, but I think we're planning for half-day sessions on the eighteenth and nineteenth.
That's correct.
That was correct. That's Thursday, Friday?
Yes, it is, the eighteenth and nineteenth. We have twelve outside agencies.
Twelve outside agencies. I believe in the past you provided fifteen to twenty minutes from them, but it traditionally carries on a little bit more than that.
So we're trying to do half, six of them in each of those. First of all, does everybody think that we can have the commissioners each having an idea of their own setting of goals and priorities by March twentieth? I think that will work. If anybody needs more time, speak up now. April third will be a regular session in the morning, but afterwards, we'll meet with all of the department heads and elected officials to get their feedback. For all those who are watching this, and I would ask the administrator to make sure that department heads and elected officials are advised of what the commission's intent is in meeting with them to hear from them their budget needs and priorities. It doesn't do us any good to meet with them if they've not contemplated that and, and got that to us for our consideration.
Mr. Chairman, just a question, and you're talking about that meeting being in a group setting with all the department heads, not individually with the department heads, is that correct?
Correct, yes. My goal was to put all of us in the same room and make sure that what we have done and started to work on on the twentieth melds with what the people that actually have to do the work are telling us. Yes, sir.
Are we going to have an opportunity to, in the group setting, to have the outside agencies also?
I don't believe so. I think we were going to. I don't believe so. I think we were going to limit that to the uh department heads and elected officials.
The May meetings is for the outside agencies.
Well, yeah, I would almost uh entertain a an additional three-hour meeting to have the group setting with our outside agencies separate.
Okay, when do you want to get that accomplished? Because those actual, you you want to do that well in advance of the actual hearings on those agency requests?
Right.
Right.
I'm I'm just going by the library. They they would like to be a participant as a county entity a little more so than coming over and and having an opportunity to hand in a request and and go back to the library and wait to hear something. So uh that's about as uh plain plainly as I can. I don't know about the senior center anymore. I happen to know their chairperson and he'd like that opportunity also, so.
When do you suggest to accomplish that? I'm not uh opposed to it. And what do the other commissioners think of meeting with uh planning with the outside agencies?
Well, it gives them, Jerry, a heads up on what our our conflicts are in in trying to budget for, you know, like last year we got we got in uh involved in um health insurance just real early and it it had a an impact on everything else as we went through the budgeting. And it's it'd be nice for those folks to see what are what's impacting us.
So you want to do it on the seventeenth, is that?
Whatever, on my schedule. On on seventeenth of what?
Of April, because we're doing the other one on the
Yeah.
Third, right?
That, do you agree?
I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'd take a little bit different position on that. I think inviting them to sit in and listen to the discussion and if they uh have something to add to it on um April third uh would be the appropriate thing. Uh, because just by phraseology, they're the outside agencies and and uh they're optional, if you will. I mean, we have some legal requirement with regard to the library and so forth. I understand that from a funding standpoint, but um I I just take a little bit different position on on uh the input and so forth.
Well, trying to get it all done in one meeting, it's it would be a little overwhelming.
Well, no, I mean, just to have them observe and and hear what we're saying, not necessarily presentations from them. I didn't mean that.
Okay.
I just so that they feel a part of the process and so that they understand then very firsthand what we're doing with the internal agents or uh internal departments.
Well, you know, that doesn't mean they can't come and sit and what listen to the meeting.
Right. No, I mean, make a special invite to them for that. Anyhow, that's my input.
I guess I tend to have to tend a little bit with you. Lon, I agree. Uh, outside of maybe three, the economic development, library, senior center, the rest of them. Soil conservation doesn't need to be here for something like that. You know, both of these folks, we've been funding for the same level for years. And I don't see the necessary to tie up a bunch of time for those. I think the three main ones, like I just mentioned, can fall under the twentieth. Or the third, rather, excuse me, the third. But just saying.
One of my goals was to have active participation of the people there to express what was going on. If we invite twelve outside agencies, I don't know how I can, as chairman, you guys put me in this hot chair, but that's going to be a hot meeting when you have twelve agencies and sixteen other department heads and elected officials. That gets to be rather cumbersome in a hurry.
I get that.
If we're going to limit it to a couple of hours, we're really not giving anybody a chance to speak other than, God, I'd like to have a raise.
I would be more in favor of expanding their time on the eighteenth and nineteenth of May if we need to for some additional comments. You know, rather than fifteen minutes, maybe we give them each thirty minutes or something.
Well, I think that it's uh our work session will be uh where we can invite them as suggested. But as far as participation in the meeting, I think it would be limited to the department heads and elected officials. But everyone's free to come and observe uh that are on the invite list, including the outside agencies. Is that a fair resolution of what we're doing?
Yes.
We can, we can agree to disagree and not be mad at each other. So whatever you want to want to do, you're the.
Well, I I get that, but I I want them to know that that they are invited and they may come, being the outside agencies.
I think.
Lon, are you suggesting that we need to go eighteenth and nineteenth beyond more than thirty minutes per agency?
I thought you had, uh, well, excuse me, maybe I misunderstood, Mr. Chairman. I I thought you were allocating about fifteen minutes for each. I was just saying expand that to thirty, but whatever the time was, maybe you expand that a few more minutes, you know, for each of them on the eighteenth and nineteenth, yes.
Right, well, we're starting at eight-thirty and we have six. And so we we actually have a little bit of flex time above. I don't want to be rigid with them because some are going to be faster than others.
And then the other thing, Mr. Chairman, is on the third, is making sure we give a specific invite to those outside agencies. Not not assuming that they'll see a notice or something, but that we make a deliberate effort to make sure they know that we're having budget discussion with the department heads.
Robert, will you make sure that happens? Every outside agency gets invited to that work meeting, although they will not get to participate, they can come and observe.
And then it may, it may open up comments and questions from them on the eighteenth and nineteenth of May after they hear our discussion.
To me, there's a big difference between inviting to participate, which I favor, as opposed to advising that you can come and sit in on a public meeting. You know, where they're, if they're given a heads up to that they'll be asked for input, to me, that gives it a little more meaning, so.
At this point, I'm not inclined to do that. I'm inclined to make sure they're.
That's what I said, we can do, agree to disagree.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then. That's the schedule uh for uh upcoming preparation for our budget meetings for twenty-twenty-four. Uh, to reiterate, um commissioners' individual goals, let's hammer those out and bring those with you on the twentieth. We'll do that after our regular meeting. April third will be a work session with the department heads and elected officials with the outside agencies uh invited to observe. And then we will have agency hearings with full participation from those agencies on the eighteenth and nineteenth on a schedule to be determined by the administrator. And notice to those uh outside agencies with regard to the April third work session. Will that work? I don't think we need a vote on it, so.
Eighteenth and nineteenth, now you're talking May, right?
May, yes, sir.
Okay.
You may have some public comment after the April third work session, so be prepared for that on the seventeenth and then on the third of May, and I'll be gone the third of May, Mr. Vice Chairman. Okay, going on then down the agenda, County Administrator, sir?
If you don't mind, would you like to have Emergency Management up here to give you a briefing on some of the activities in the past week or two?
We will hear from the administrator. Member, please state your name for the public.
R. Ashley, the Emergency Manager. Yeah, we kind of had an eventful week last week, starting on Sunday, the twenty-sixth, with the storms that moved in. They kind of formed a little a little farther west from us than what was anticipated, but according to the national weather, we had winds up to seventy mile an hour with eighty-three being the highest out here on the west side of town. Did open the EOC about fifteen-thirty or three-thirty Sunday afternoon anticipation of these storms. During out, throughout the storms, Sunflower Electric lost three steel structures out here near Shamalka Road, causing their three-forty-five line to go to the ground, blocked US fifty for about a day and a half, almost two days. But I had made contact with Sunflower and KDOT, so it took that three-forty-five line, took it top of the structure and just turned it into a big ball of steel. So they had to bring in specialized equipment to cut that line apart to get it cleared off the road, so. And then thirty-three-hundred block of VFW, we had one house suffered some major damage when the roof blew off the building behind them and kind of damaged the second story of the house. They were home at the time. Fortunately, we didn't have any injuries there. Uh, Red Cross is notified. Their insurance made contact with us, so uh the people were able to find housing for the evening. Well, in fact, their insurance put them up for two weeks, so into someplace until they could get affect repairs. The old crazy house building had a couple of their doors blown in. And um up on uh Solar Avenue, Boselman's truck stopped the campground up there. We had a couple trailers get tore up up there, travel trailers, and then a couple damaged. They were unoccupied at the time, so fortunately, again, no injuries. So we've been in contact with Red Cross. They've got a disaster team up here trying to make contact. We didn't, we don't know who owns these trailers up here on, at this time, up here in Boselman, so we're trying to figure that one out and get them into the right people that needs to be. And last Wednesday, the first, we were one of seventeen school districts that got hit with uh faults, active shooter calls. And that came into Garden City Dispatch about nine o'clock or nine-ten. The response from the first responders, PD, fire, ambulance was incredible. They were there within minutes, so. Uh, we did take the command, mobile command trailer up and uh we established uh command at Church of the Nazarene. We used our parking lot, so we were able to activate the mobile command trailer from there. Um, a call went out for a drone to locate one of the students that left the building, run to the north. They, she was unaccounted for at that point. Fortunately, our GIS department has a pilot now for their drone, which he is, Tom, is really good. And I happened to have him up at VFW flying uh storm damage up there when the call come out, so he was there within five minutes. So we made use of the drone. We did locate the student before um the drone got there, but we went ahead and deployed the drone to uh observe the vehicles and the high school. We were probably uh about an eighth of a mile away from the high school, so we had that drone up in the air so we could see the traffic moving on Mary and stuff, so we could kind of monitor that. Fire and Police Department pretty well had command. They had the situation well under control. So um we took the command down about twelve-thirty after we were sure all the people were out. They closed the school, canceled the school for the rest of the day, so we wanted to stay on scene to make sure in case there was traffic accidents and stuff, we had the proper personnel there to kind of handle that. But other than that, that's pretty much was weak.
Questions from the commission?
Have any idea where the call originated from?
No, sir, we don't. This happened the same time last year in Missouri and Colorado. And so we don't, you know, we don't know where any of this came from. You know, of course, they're looking, but it was all computer generated, they think, so. Nothing definitive at this point in time, so. It's one of, you know, if you didn't take it serious and you'd be in trouble, so, you know, our law enforcement and everybody took it very serious. They were, they were there. They were in the building and had the students secure within a matter of minutes.
Now, this was just four-five-seven?
Yes, here, but Liberal had got it. There was some schools back east. There were seventeen total that day that got hit, approximately about the same time. So it, you know, in fact, some of our mutual aid had to take from here and go to Liberal to assist them as well, so.
Same time Kobe was called, so they did a good job.
While it might be very frustrating to those involved, it seems to me that we got some free training.
We did, and it was, you know, we learned a valuable lesson on some of that. Our first responders found out that drones very, very useful in a situation like that, so we're planning on using it more in the event we have another situation. So it's.
Got backup drone?
No, not not at this point in time, we don't, but.
We have one.
That may be a question to ask Trey Phillips from GIS, but yes, I would think we would need a backup, so.
Thank you more towards Emergency Management.
Yeah, I would think.
First thing I'm gonna do is shoot your drone down.
Well, you'd have three hundred and fifty feet is what they fly it at. You'd have to be a fairly decent shot, but it could happen, so.
We also need a pilot if we get a backup drone.
Yes, and we've got, right now, we've got a great pilot, but it's coming up, you know. And I know Fire Department and Police Departments both talked about it as well, so. But I think that kind of opened our eyes up on how valuable they actually are, so.
Not a question, but just a a compliment to Paul and and what he's doing. And I I don't remember, it was two or three weeks ago, or maybe I'd lose track of time. You had another day that that you had multiple things going on and and I remember just walking into the building and and you had been briefing our administrator about that. So uh it's been a busy time for Paul and 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 all the first responders. I I don't want to, you know, slight them, but I appreciate what Paul's been doing and and coordinating uh some of these things, so.
I appreciate that. Appreciate that.
Anything else?
Uh, no, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the administrator's report.
Sure, we'll just uh a brief follow-up on your budget discussion. Uh, I believe um Jenny will be sending out uh today probably notification to the outside agencies on uh their budget requests and so forth, so they'll have those um beginning this week. And what other items?
A date for IMA?
Oh, yes.
A late Friday afternoon, Jenny Newberry, Finance Director, um late Friday afternoon, IMA got in touch with me and they would also like to schedule with all of you and department heads for um March twenty-third. It's a Thursday. They have all day. They can meet whenever you guys can meet, but this would be the full commission and department heads to go through our health insurance options for twenty-four.
Does that need to be a regular meeting or a special meeting?
Uh, just a work session. It'll be done in a work session. It's more for information, just a, just to.
Twenty-third?
Yes.
To give the discussion.
That's a what day of the week?
Thursday.
They can't do it during, after a commission meeting or before, during or?
They had limited time that they could match with Robert's schedule. And this was the only day that we could come up with that matched both of those. Um, they had the twenty-ninth, I believe, was the other day that they were, that they could be out here.
That'd be, that'd work better for me, you know, I don't know about anybody else.
What what time, Jenny?
As far as I know, on the twenty-third, I know they didn't, they could be here whenever. They had no, no scheduled conflicts the entire day. The twenty-ninth, I'm not sure. I would have to check back with them.
The purpose of the meeting with IMA is to determine what?
Just to discuss um how our health insurance plan has been running and what potential options we have for twenty-four.
And what kind of written report are they going to give us in advance of the meeting?
Um, probably the booklet that would be very similar to what you saw um into, in the commission meeting a couple of weeks ago, plus some of the options that they've been working up for us.
Okay, and can I get those options to us so that we can read?
Sure, yep. They had a, they had a different one than that that they presented to our small HIPAA group. Since there was some things that were discussed in that that pertain to employees, it could not be open to the entire group, but they have a, they have a booklet already created with some of, with those options that they could pull those HIPAA pages out of.
As we all know, our health costs for our employees are. As we all know, our health costs for our employees are a rising and large concern of the county commission as an employer. I think that we need to have everyone there that can be, and the vice chairman is not available on the twenty-third.
And I may not be on the twenty-ninth, so. I, I think we're gonna miss somebody some, one of those times, but.
If you're asking me to decide, I, I can't tell you which is the better time for the commission, so let's have a discussion, whether it's the twenty-third or the twenty-ninth. What does it work for? As far as you, Jenny, which works best for you?
Either one of those is okay with me. I'm, I'm going to do, actually, the twenty-ninth, maybe. What day is that?
Wednesday.
Okay, no, it's okay, yeah. I'm gonna be doing CPM remotely this month because of all the conflicts, so neither one of those falls on the date.
We're talking March?
Right, we're all on March. On the twenty-third or the twenty-ninth. Mr. Administrator, are you available on twenty-three and twenty-nine?
Twenty-three only.
You can make it the twenty-third, but not the twenty-ninth?
Correct. We do it the twenty-third.
Do it on the twenty-third.
We're going to do it on the twenty-third.
Do you have a preference for time that I can? Okay. I'll have him be here, eight-thirty, nine?
Is eight-thirty all right with everybody? We'll do a work session at eight-thirty on the twenty-third.
And we, we do have a schedule, a budget timeline that we've been working on internally. It is a completely internal document, but it is a work in progress, so. We've got dates that you gave us this morning also that will be put in here, and this will be, I'll go ahead and get it sent out for you guys to look at, but this is just kind of what we're working off of, and we're adding things as we go along, because the county has not had a timeline set up prior to this year, so. A lot of things that we keep adding in as we go along.
I know you're not the folks that generating the deal, but you're our contact person with IMA. When can they get us their written materials for preparation for the twenty-third?
When would you like to have it?
More importantly, what do you think is reasonable for them?
I, I think they probably could have it to you the end of this week, if that works.
That's fine. I would like.
Okay.
At least seven days notice.
Okay. I will find out for sure and send an email out letting you know what, what day.
If they have their recommendations to you in seven days, can we have administrator and assistant administrators' comments to those proposals?
Sure.
Have something to be prepared for actually having a meeting with them.
Sure.
We're not going to make any decision on the twenty-third, but.
No, it's just informational, uh-huh.
Just as a sidebar, I know that when we visited with IMA, they're going through much the same process with many of their other clients here in Southwest Kansas. So we're not unique here. Everybody's kind of wrapped up in those escalating costs.
Well, it'll help us on planning when we get to the third, have a good idea what our healthcare costs are gonna look like.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on your agenda, sir.
Also in your packet, you did see a brief memo from me, and it's related to Sewer District number three. If you recall, we had one project that originated out in the county initially, but moved into the city operations because of access to some special funding that we did not have at that point in time. But the document specifically talks about the sewer rates within that district. Why this is important is that they are wanting to utilize, they, the subdivision to the north of Sewer District Three, approximately seventy lots of those are wanting to utilize the infrastructure within that sewer district to provide service for those seventy, approximately seventy lots. So in my brief memo to you, I, I talked a bit about what the district members have paid to date on, on that debt and what they still owe and so forth. In essence, it's, it's pulling you through to come up with a connection fee, if you will, or just a fee structure in general for those users that are outside of the district. And I'll be working with county councillor as we develop a, an agreement and a new fee schedule for the district as well as those outside of the district. Once again, we've never had that, so it's, it's creating a new item. But in general, the costs associated with those homeowners within the district over the past twenty, twenty-one years has paid approximately an average of twelve dollars a month for the debt retirement of that district. And recall, that's the one that we refinanced and I think we close on that in February of this year, if I remember, or last year, if I remember correctly. So, so anyway, we'll present to you here within the next meeting or two a proposed fee structure resolution for that. What we're, what I'm anticipating is that obviously those within the district will continue to pay off that debt, and remember that we levy a tax to pay off that debt. And then what we'll, what I anticipate then proposing is a monthly fee for those outside that is equivalent to that, that monthly amount that they're paying, if you will, so approximately twelve dollars a month on, on top of what the monthly operating charge is for that district as well. And the monthly operating charge is, comes to around eighteen, eighteen dollars and fifty cents, so. Once again, this will be a new fee structure. We, if you recall, we went through this about three years ago in restructuring that sewer district's fee schedule. And with that, with the refinancing and so forth, kind of puts some things in alignment. So anyway, we'll look for that in the next meeting or two, that you'll, you'll see something before you.
Question, Robert, on the new development, the undeveloped lots, is there a fee that goes with those too? Monthly?
No, it'll just be, it will just be those lots that are connected. Yes.
The others, yeah, the others won't be connected to our sewer district, is the way I understand.
Correct, correct.
So essentially, if I'm understanding the problem, we have to determine what we're gonna charge the people that are gonna be within the city?
Outside of our district.
Outside of our district, what's their cost to hook up and what's their participation or sewer district cost for doing so? We have three hundred and nine units that are within Sewer District number three. We're gonna add seventy.
Approximately seventy, uh-huh.
And what can we do to work with the city and the developer to make sure that the cost of the new hookup fee and so forth is within the design and participation of that development agreement? So that the development goes forward and doesn't get upended by excessive fees from the board of county commissioners?
Yes, I guess if that's a comment, yes, or.
So what can be done between now and the time that we need to set this fee? To work with the city and the developer to make sure that our numbers are in conformity with what they think they can handle in the development? That's my question to you, Robert.
Okay, well, I, I know that, that, I think you've had, Karen, you've had a conversation with Jimmy on the, on this issue, and this is the first step, is in essence, going through the numbers, making certain that we identify what our costs are and making certain that the one, the, your tenants inside the district are treated fairly as well, so.
It is a matter of fairness.
And, and I'm not anticipating. We could have went, we could have gone a couple ways. We could have identified a lump sum connection fee. But keep in mind, they're not, you've got seventy lots. They're not all gonna plop down at the same time, so. So in reworking the numbers and so forth, it made more sense to do a monthly sewer fee for those that are, that will be hooked up, whether they're hooked up the first year or fifteen years from now. It'll be that same dollar amount, and it is equivalent to what those inside the district are paying.
And isn't there an additional structure that we need to build inside the district for the purpose of maintaining and handling the sludge materials from the seventy lots that are inside the city and outside the district?
What we, what we did when this was a project initially for the county is that we pulled in outside engineer to assess and study the infrastructure of that district, and we have made some enhancements to it, and there will be some future enhancements to it. Remember that the majority of that will be paid from ARPA funds. So what, what, once again, I anticipate then is not only the monthly operating fee that all those inside of the district pay would be the same fee for those outside, but also that equivalent dollar amount on a per monthly basis that those inside of the district are paying through their tax levy, since, since technically you, the board, would not be able to levy a tax for that district outside of the district in, in, within the city.
And Mr. Chairman, if I might add in, in response to your question about what else is being done or what is being done, the annual meeting of our HOA, which is this sewer district, well, is, is the north part of this sewer district meets this week, or the annual meeting is this week, and I will be presenting to them what Robert has summarized in the map and so forth, and allow them the opportunity to make comments to our administrator if they have any with regard to the fairness question, because that question has been asked for the last two years out in our subdivision. And there's concern about that fairness part.
Well, and now I'm gonna direct this towards the county councillor. Isn't there some kind of an agreement that we can make with the city with regard to the additional enhancements within the district? If there's need for repairs and so forth, that the city participates in the cost of those future repairs. I wanna know how we're gonna get into it, and I wanna know how we're gonna maintain it.
And my conversation with Mr. Dumb and Ruth on some of that is that we'll, they needed these numbers first that we're talking about here, so that we can figure that out, and once they had those numbers, we could have a discussion about an interlocal agreement so that we can start working on, like, from the subdivision to, with the hookup right into our system, who's responsible for that, who's responsible for repairs if that breaks and everything of that nature, which would be included in that interlocal agreement, but I believe that, at least from their standpoint, they're hoping that that would be the next step after they figure out what these numbers are gonna be.
Okay, can we get a timeline for when we're gonna get this accomplished, so that the city and the developer have a target date that we can be working towards?
I know that the city needed our numbers so that they could pass their resolution, because I believe that, my understanding of it is that we would pass what the numbers are gonna be. They would collect it within where they collect water and everything, the fees for the water usage and all of that. And then that gets paid back to the city, so they needed to get this resolution done. And then as soon as we get that part done, Mr. Dumb and Ruth said that we would start working on the interlocal, so probably as soon as we can.
As soon as you can, timeframe. Let's get some objective dates in mind, so that city, developer, and us have in mind when we're gonna pass a rate schedule to get to the city and the developer.
Okay.
What's the timeframe?
The.
For our next meeting?
Probably the first one in April. I believe whenever we had talked something about this, the hope was that we would be setting this connection fee at our next meeting, which is that March twentieth date, which would then allow them to set their numbers at there one after that, and then hopefully we would have a timeline at least by that first meeting in April.
So is it fair to say then, both councillor and administrator, that we'll have recommendations to the commission here as to what the rate should be? For our twentieth meeting?
Yes, we can make that happen, yeah.
And Mr. Chairman?
Comments from the commission?
Well, just a quick side note, the, the development is moving on. They brought in the big equipment, and their, their, this week's gonna be some transformation, and they already have it flagged, and I think I referenced it to Curtis, where they're gonna come to the connection to this sewer district, and it will affect county roads in, within the subdivision. So I wanted to make sure Curtis was aware that they were in process, so. It's, it's moving, I, I think it's gonna start moving very quickly this week, even though they were stopped for a while.
All right, have we discussed all of Sewer District number three that we need to? And would you then continue with the last two-year report?
That, that is all I have for you this morning, at this point in time.
Attorney, to you, Ms. Schorts, what do you have for us today?
We, uh, the commission had tasked me with putting forth the memorandum, which is attached in the packet for today's meeting for the HDAC buy contract, which was put forth by Public Works a meeting, a couple of meetings back. There were some specific questions that the board had asked to be answered within that. One is the county limited in procuring equipment from other sources. Specifically reached out to them to ask them about that in email. They do specifically indicate that, that we would not be limited to just using that one particular source in order to procure these goods and services. However, I would point out to the board that in Article Three, it states that the contract and any attachments as provided herein constitute the complete contract between the parties and supersede any and all oral and written agreements between the parties related to matters herein. When asked specifically if they would allow an amendment to, within the contract, that they would that the end user, meaning the county, retain its ability to run its own bidding process and utilize other procurement platforms without penalty, they declined via email to make any such amendment to that agreement. The other cited source that would be similar to an HDAC agreement would be the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program, which the county has utilized in the past. It is based out of Minnesota and created under Minnesota law, much like the HDAC buy contract is created out of Texas and Texas law. The county signed up as a user for this program. It's limited to government unit, including state, city, county, town, village, school district. It does not require a written agreement to utilize this purchasing program. They would provide one if the county so requested, which is where my search took us, is to try to find where that agreement was and couldn't find it, which is where they said, well, we can provide one if you want one. It does specifically state that is a non-exclusive and voluntary agreement if we were to sign that particular agreement. Within the HDAC contract, it states that the law and venue, rules of the state where the item is purchased would govern any purchasing of items or services through that contract. They contract with businesses in various states, so the law governing the purchase would vary by purchase. The agreement's able to be terminated by giving thirty days written notice by certified mail at any point in time. The evaluation of cost options, the county would still very much need to be aware of its use in procuring the geared services to this contract as the best value for the item needing to be purchased. It's my understanding the equipment that would be desired to be purchased by Public Works can still be purchased directly from the vendor, but in theory would be cheaper if it was purchased through this agreement. If the vendor is only registered through this purchasing agreement program and not with another, like Sourcewell, then that particular agreement could only be had from the vendor. So this contract may be the best route to get the best price if we did sign the agreement with HGAC. The, uh, there was a question on what it is that we would anticipate using. It was put forth by Public Works in this one, so Mr. Logston did indicate that they would look at purchasing construction equipment, pickups and SUVs, auto part purchases, generator purchases, and community planning services such as transportation plans, subdivision regulations, zoning regulations, et cetera. There is a complete list of goods and services, which can be seen at their website. The website indicates that they have six thousand eight hundred and forty-nine products and services through one thousand two hundred and forty-four separate vendors. That list was only encompassing what Public Works would be able to use. There would be other departments who in theory could utilize the services through this contract, such as EMS and purchasing new ambulances. I did attempt to reach out to city departments to see if there had been any use through this HGAC prog- process through the city. After writing of this memo, I did receive some limited information afterwards, mostly that they had used Sourcewell, that there had been prior usage from the department prior to that department head being in that department, and he didn't have any information about how that process had worked at all for them. Sourcewell had seemed to have worked very well for them, and that was through the, the fire department as far as that end of it goes.
Do you have a recommendation as to whether we should approve the HGAC proposal?
The biggest concern for me at this point in time is that while they indicate that this is not exclusive as far as the contract goes, and that we can go out and use our own bidding process and still utilize Sourcewell, they have specifically said that we are not going to add that into the agreement. So, and their contract is pretty clear that it says anything verbal beyond this is not part of the contract. So a- at this point in time, it, I don't know that I can recommend that we approve the HGAC contract.
Discussion or comments from commissioners?
Concerned when they say something and won't put it in writing, I have a concern.
Any other comments? Curtis, do you have a moment to address us, please? I'd like to ask you a couple of questions. This was your proposal on this contract. Do you think this contract is critical for us, where we use Sourcewell also? I know this is something that you had recommended to us, and the city is on their website as a person, or as an entity that uses it, but we can't confirm any purchases through HGAC. What, what's your understanding?
Well, as I brought it forward to you initially, I consider it the same benefit as Sourcewell. That is why I made a recommendation of having this contract signed. I have not used HGAC Buy. I have used Sourcewell many times in my career. It is a mechanism to the county's benefit to make purchases more efficient and supposedly saving a lot of time. So I would have to stand with my initial recommendation that I recommend that the county sign this.
Any other questions from commissioners? All right, thank you.
Trying to phrase it, sir. What's the penalty if we do? Say we, say we sign the contract and we go buy from Sourcewell. What's the downfall? Are they gonna jump up and down, or are they even gonna know?
Ms. Schertz?
Or Curtis, either one. If you buy from HGAC instead of Sourcewell, I mean...
It's like buying from Ford and not Chevy. They, they, no, no, they, they...
Hey, 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 you couldn't have bought that from me?
They each have their own members. I can be a member to both of the organizations. Nobody is gonna, I mean, to be honest with you, I don't think they would either ever know. There's too many contracts done on a yearly basis throughout the nation that they could even keep track of, so... And again, HGAC Buy is, it's not a small organization. I mean, they have hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of people and organizations that buy through them.
And my follow-up question, is there any, can you give a specific piece of equipment that you cannot get from Sourcewell that you can get from HGAC?
Well, the one that I wanted to get when I initially came to you guys was a special asphalt patch truck. But I have lost that, um, let's say, I've lost that benefit that I had. There was a spot being saved for me in the manufacturing process, and because this has taken so long to get approved, I've lost that spot. So now I probably won't be approaching that again, because that bill date would be a couple of years out.
Any further questions for Curtis or Curtis, Ms. Schertz?
To me, there was a concern raised when Curtis presented this. The concern is still here. We don't need to buy anything from them. So why, why get involved in something that's concerning? Why not say, "It was nice to talk about. Let's move on without it"?
We can always revisit it at a later time, can we not?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Does the commissioner have any motions to make with regard to the contract? If I don't hear a motion, then I'm gonna table it. All right, consider the matter tabled. Next item up. Do you have anything else, county councillor?
Yes. As you all are aware, I just recently was put into this position there, and there was a lag time between the prior county councillor being in this position and my being put into the position. There have been any, any number of items that have sat during that time, one of which has included the county tax sale. What, um... My proposal at this point in time would be to ask for a motion to go into executive session pursuant to CASA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B three to discuss employer-employee negotiations for non-elected personnel. I guess it would fall under three and one.
All right. Need to discuss negotiations, right?
Yes, Commissioner. Chairman?
Is there a motion to go into executive session, and how long do you think this would take?
Uh, probably ten minutes, if that.
Mr. Chairman, are we saying board members and council, or anyone else?
Uh, probably the administrator as well.
I would so move, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved that we go into executive session for a period of ten minutes to discuss this, and that the administrator and county councillor join us in the executive session. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second. Can you add five minutes on the backside?
We are going to be, have to ask to amend the motion to fifteen minutes?
So, yeah, so amend.
Is there a second to the motion to go into executive session?
Second. I'll second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, and the purpose is to discuss non-elected personnel or contract negotiations, and any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Host, we're in executive session for fifteen minutes. We'll reconvene at ten o'clock.
To return to regular session, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are back in regular session. The matter that's pending before us, I would confirm to everyone that no action was taken in the executive session. And that we need to have a motion to engage the Hope Mills Firm, Ms. Schartz Firm, for the purpose of assisting her in prosecuting a 2023 tax sale. Is there a motion to that extent? The rates are for staff 120, for Ms. Schartz 275, and Mr. Collins for oversight at 300 an hour to be itemized along their firm's practices.
I would so move.
There's motion made, is there a second, Mr. Jones?
Actual second.
Second, is there any further discussion on the need to get this tax sale done and the employment of council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Tax sale right away, please. Inherent in that tax sale authorization will be the incurrence of the expenses of updated title work from First American. All right, next on our agenda is development update. I've been chastised by the public on my phone, we're not doing a good enough job of talking into our microphones. Mainly me, I guess. So, for all those listening in the world, leave my phone alone, I shouldn't be looking at it. And please announce your name and tell us what you need to do.
Morning again, Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. So this morning, development updates date wise for the three main developments that we have going on in the county right now. I only have an update for Randall Estates during these past two weeks. It was, the infrastructure was approved by County Public Works. And so their next step is to, they're wanting to resubmit costs for their RHID. So they'll have to submit that to us and we'll have to get a resolution to amend the development agreement. So that is their next steps there, but besides that, everything is pretty much ready to go, except for submitting like bonds and getting a pre-construction meeting and so on, so.
Timeframe for getting this development ready to go? I mean getting the RHID application revised?
Right now, we're waiting on the developer to submit those new costs to us. So we haven't received those yet. Once we receive those, then I'll be working with County Council to get that resolution made. And we, depending on when they submit those costs, if they submit it this week, we might be able to get on the next agenda item. If it's after this week, then we'll have to wait till the next meeting, so.
All right, I just want to make clear that it's priority that we get our things done and that people start moving across this grid. And if we're waiting on them, there's nothing we can do about it, but best efforts, please.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
So I do have a few other updates not related to these three developments. We did within the past couple of weeks have a meeting with a developer for the property just north of Old Bostelman's, now TA. They are looking at developing that site and so we'll keep you updated as that goes along. I don't think I can divulge right now what's going in there, but at a later date we can. I also met with NDS last week to discuss the amendment for the storage containers that went before planning commission last month. So that meeting went really well, we're looking at a couple of different options of how we can improve maybe the aesthetics of those and limiting the amount of storage containers per acreage and so on, so we're looking into that right now.
We had a nice discussion last week, for those who weren't here, about containers on property and.
Two acre plots.
I think there's gonna be a lot of containers available. Looks like, I read an article in the Journal this morning about how the rates have changed. Used to be about 15,000 to ship from here to China, now it's down to about 1,200. And they've got containers stacked everywhere.
Well, that's wonderful, but I think we need to regulate them and zone and plan accordingly.
Yes.
Because I think they're gonna be available.
Which brings back to my earlier comment or appreciation that neighborhood developer and you are communicating to involve you in this process and county projects, so.
Yeah. So in addition to that, there's a couple of meeting updates that haven't, we were aware of after the agenda was published. So one is the rescheduled Southwest Kansas Highway Officials Annual Meeting. That was supposed to be in February, I believe. And it was rescheduled due to the snowstorm, that is this Wednesday, and registration starts at 8:30.
Where's it at?
At the Clarion.
Then who do you expect to be there?
Um. So that'd be representatives from all 19 southwest counties, and then county commissioners.
19 southwest Kansas counties.
Yes.
Larry, is that what you're talking about Thursday? Is this?
No, that's a different one. This one was on the list too.
Can I have that back?
So in addition to that, on Thursday, March 9th at noon, there is going to be an event called Garden City Builds. And this is being put on by the Southwest Kansas Home Builders Association. And I believe EcoDevo is also involved. They are having an event for local architects and other design professionals and contractors to come and meet the development teams within the community. And it's gonna be, I believe more of like a meet and greet, but you are.
Thursday, March 9th?
Thursday, March 9th, yes.
At what time and where?
At noon, and it's at the Church of the Nazarene. And it does request that there, that you do RSVP, I can send that information out for you.
Question?
That's not the one in Scott City.
No, that is not the one in Scott City.
I believe we've handed around the flyer for the Garden City Build.
Okay.
Correct?
Yep.
Anything else, Ms. Phillips?
There was a talk of Sunset Terrace earlier. I just wanted to make the board aware that we are supposed to be included in the pre-construction meeting when they go past any part of just dirt work. Right now, they're only allowed to do dirt work from what we've been told. So if we hear anything different, we'll let you know, they're not supposed to be doing anything else but dirt work. So, that's it? Any questions?
Questions?
All I know is they flagged it for where it's going over the road streets.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the upcoming meetings in advance. We received in our packets the outline that's in there, is there any further discussion on the upcoming events?
Mr. Chairman, I would just simply say I don't see the chamber breakfast on there. And we need to get that on each month, Gabby, if you would please. But it's what, third Wednesday of each month?
So this month, when is it?
It would be, what is that?
Well, I was trying to write it down, so I wanted.
Just a second. It'd be 15th, 15th, I believe, is what I have on my calendar. And then the other thing, just to highlight, or the other two things to highlight is the legislative coffees that are once a month here for the next three months. And then a question that I have, Mr. Chairman, to the administrator, is the county purchasing one or two tables for the chamber banquet that we would be able to be included at?
Yes, we do have two tables, need to get a list from the commission of who will be in attendance and and then we open it up to the department heads after that.
Put me down for two, please.
Mr. Jones? I'll be there with two for me, please.
Okay.
As always, wait until, see if you got a vacant seat.
Okay. And that's March 30th, the.
Correct. At middle school.
All right, any other comments on upcoming meetings or events? Commissioner Pishney, you're going to Hays for the Kansas County Commissioners Association Annual Conference?
Yes, I was just gonna weave that into my report, but it is on our calendar of upcoming meetings. But anyone is more than welcome to attend that day and a half session up in Hays, if I am registered, yes.
Would you let the public know what position you have with that association?
Well, and I'm gonna expand my answer just briefly. There's the KAC, which is all county, encompasses all the county. And then there's, I call them subgroups, there's different wording for that, for treasurers, clerks, et cetera. And the county commissioners have their specific organization, the Kansas County Commissioner Association. So there's a board of directors for the KAC that we can be a part of. But on the KCCA, there's an executive committee and I am one of the members for that, representing the Southwest Kansas area.
Next item, anything up regarding meetings or events? Next item on our agenda is commissioners' reports. And I'll start today by saying that we have some important meetings coming up. I did not do anything this past week other than planning. But I wanted to encourage those that can, tomorrow night at 7:00 PM here, we'll be having a meeting with regard to the other participants in the assessment that we approved two meetings ago with the Lundeen folks. And that's at 7 o'clock here at the Carol Brown.
The Hunniden Group?
What is the meeting that's tomorrow night at 7 o'clock?
Shouldn't have one tomorrow night.
When are you meeting with the assessment meeting?
Well, we were going to do it on the 7th, but we were going to do it in the morning. We had to move it to the 10th, but as of this morning, we're gonna have to move it from the 10th.
Okay, well.
Because we've had health issues, funeral and so forth come up and I'll be communicating with Hunniden as soon as this meeting's over.
All right, well, I'll get off in mine.
But it's okay, I mean, just know, the public and our board needs to know that we have started that, or we're going to be starting that process with Hunniden on the assessment and audit of facilities. We do have the funding available.
All right, that ends my report, Commissioner Jones?
Since I missed the last meeting, about the only thing I've really attended was the South Highway 83 update from KDOT and several of us were in attendance. And it was quite interesting, that was the morning after the big wind. And they were explaining the challenges they were having, having closed down Highway 400. Other than that, I think there's lots of things coming up in the legislature with food taxes and those type of things. I guess we will be in touch with our legislators at the coffee unless we talk to them sooner. Also Friday will be the conference call for KLPG at 8. And I hope all of you have that number, it's easy to get on and off. And usually only lasts 30 minutes.
Mr. Pishney?
Not a lot to report from the past, and I did miss the last meeting due to family obligations. But the one thing I did want to highlight, and unfortunately Paul has left, but I wanted to give credit to Paul and Maria for the day at the Capitol. They did a great job of setting up a table for Fannie County. The county day at the Capitol was the second year that this was held and really went well. And a lot of legislators passed through the rotunda and you're able to say hi to them and let them know that the counties are viable part of state government. And again, just a shout out to Paul and Maria for, and it seemed like there was a third. Oh yeah, yeah, there was a, they had a helper, but they were the two that manned the booth most of the hours that we were there. The legislative issues, as Larry said. The legislative issues, as Larry said, and I want to thank Robert for putting together some information that I passed on to Bill Clifford with regard to the sales tax issue. But all, there's a chain email going out, if you will. I don't mean that from a meetings violation standpoint, but from counties throughout Kansas and a couple of them, Riley County, Pawnee County. And there are a number of them have expressed concerns and are giving examples of what it would cost counties. But that's a bill in the Senate. Well, there's actually a couple of bills in the Senate. And we're working on trying to alter or stop that bad legislation. And I appreciate Robert's efforts in getting some things put together for Bill Clifford as quickly as he did. I do plan to attend the meeting Wednesday. And then on Thursday, and are you going to that one on Thursday in Scott City? There's a Highway eighty-three corridor meeting in Scott City. And I plan to attend that and give support to the Scott County folks as well. You mentioned the KAC, or excuse me, KCCA meeting in April. And that'll be an educational time. And I don't know who some of the speakers are at this point, but for about a day and a half. And it'll be in Hays this year, and they moved that around. Hopefully, it'll be in Garden City one of these times as well. And then lastly, just to emphasize again, the audit assessment thing. We do have the funding. The city did step up to the plate with five thousand dollars of funding. So that lowers our county obligation to thirty thousand. We had set up to thirty-five. I have another funding request out that will be addressed on the eighth, which is Wednesday this week, and we'll see where that goes. So it could, we could have our exposure reduced even a little bit more. But we have committed to Hunniden. The contract has been signed. And the Zoom meeting was supposed to be this week, but I think we're gonna need to postpone it to get them started and find out what day they would be here to begin their assessment.
I just had on my emails that we were going to do something tomorrow night. Is that?
No, it was originally set for tomorrow morning. I don't know how the evening thing came about. But, and then we had to move it because it's city commission tomorrow, and we had too many people that were gonna be attending. I had overlooked that. And moved it to Friday, but now we've got conflicts with three of the four main people.
Was that at the chamber at ten o'clock? And we're not gonna be able to do that?
Well, I don't think so. I'm hoping Hunniden can move that because Roxanne had an emergency. We've got some health things. I've got a funeral I need to attend, and so.
Okay, so I can delete that event?
I think so. Leave it on now, and I'll be sending out a update. I'll be visiting with them yet this morning.
Right, Commissioner Jerez?
Busy two weeks. I represented the county at the Fennec County Conservation Annual Meeting. I covered for law and at the Economic Development Monthly Meeting.
Thank you.
Had my monthly Great Plains meeting, kind of typical business, denied a few, approved a few loan applications. Attended one of the KPLG conference calls. I, along with several of you guys and staff, went to the KDOT eighty-three South meeting on a Monday. And lastly, I did not take care of it, and I think Chairman, you took care of it. I had a taxpayer compliance complaint issue, and I was out of town. And you answered that before I even read the first one. So hopefully, that issue is moving through the channels.
That's it. Commissioner Jones?
A handful of meetings, Mr. Chairman. Nobody's mentioned the gun, the Sand and Sage Gun, the collector's show, but I did attend that. And that's always a big turnout for our exhibition building. Their Saturday, then the storm came in Sunday and kinda rained on the parade a little. Also attended a fundraiser at the American Legion. They had a chili feed and a, and a few lottery things and so on, trying to raise money for the auxiliary. Then the KDOT meeting that was mentioned on the eighty-three impact on what's gonna become abandoned KDOT property and suddenly be county property. We had a meeting on the Recreation Fund that we acted on this morning in the consent agenda. There were about eight thousand dollars of money available, not much. And what were there, seven or six? Six. If you divided it up evenly, thirteen hundred and thirty-three dollars per request. And we had requests from fifteen hundred dollars up to thirty-seven thousand dollars. So we divided it up, and what you acted on by adopting the consent agenda was thirteen hundred and thirty-three dollars to each of the requesting entities. And then finally, attended the library board. And next month, we will be asked to replace a board member. Our chairman has tendered his resignation. Kara may know him, and maybe she can impact his decision a little. But we're gonna miss him. He's done a, done a good job there.
Don't beat around the bush, who is your chairman?
Well, it would be a fellow that she resides with.
Oh. Does that person have a name, Commissioner?
Robert, but he has a different last name. I'm sitting here drawing a blank, and I can't.
It's Scrivner.
Yeah, there we go. I'm gonna remind you of something. Doesn't mean that we can't accept other nominations. But when, when Jay, J.J.J., what, Jay Cook was appointed, we had an application also from Marcia Rupp, Dave Rupp's wife. And she is still interested. So we will see that name come again before next meeting. They're going to kinda drumroll and see if anybody else is interested. And then I can bring that to our next meeting. So we will be asked to act on a nomination. And with that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, for purposes of the county commission, we'll meet with the administrator, assistant administrator, council at ten AM on the thirteenth for our next planning mission, planning meeting. There are some really exciting things going on in our community, and we'll hear from Eco, Economic Development on the agenda for the twentieth. And the final thing on our agenda this morning is setting our meetings. And it appears to me that if I correct notes, we can add to the upcoming meetings, the work session with outside agency hearings on May eighteenth and nineteenth, beginning at eight thirty AM. Is there any other business before the commission?
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I need about, up to ten minutes on executive session, non-elected personnel.
Yes, sir. And that's something that we need to do. I'd like to entertain a motion for an executive session for ten minutes to meet with non-elected personnel, to have the county counselor and the administrator attend with us. Is there a motion to that effect?
Should I move?
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been moved and seconded to go into executive session for non-elected personnel with administrator and council attending. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we're in executive session for ten minutes. We'll reconvene at ten thirty-five.
We do, from the action earlier on the Crack Seal project, did need the commission's authorization by formal vote, authorizing Public Works Director to sign the agreement following review from the county counselor. My apologies. A motion from the board to authorize the Public Works Director to sign the crack seal agreement once it has passed, gone past, the county councillor.
Mr. Chairman, so move as stated.
Is there a second? Been moved and seconded that we approve the courtesy to sign the chip seal contract amount of one hundred and six thousand... I want to handle the exact number of authorization. Hundred and six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Subject to approval by the county councillor. So we've heard the discussion on the motion, and so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Administrator, anything else?
That is it for the day.
Anything else from the county commission for whatever we need to handle in today's business? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, we adjourn.
Is there a second to the motion to adjourn?
Wake him up. All second.
All right, is there any discussion on the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
That's one of those where there being no discussion.